I haven't had a chance to look since about 2 o'clock today.
Oh, I haven't looked since AM.
We're gonna do the budget meeting first. I would like to call our budget public hearing to order. Thank you to everyone who was here tonight. Right now, we will take comments on the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget, and these are for the public. So please limit your comments to three minutes. Do you have anything to add, Dr. Sears?
No.
No, I got everything? Okay, so do we have anyone who would like to make any comments about the budget? Please approach the microphone.
Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, Dr. Sears. My name is Candy Cassa-Lucio, and I'm the President of PCEA. I'm here to speak tonight on behalf of our members. In preparing our remarks for tonight, I first reflect back on comments from previous years. I'd like to first say thank you, and that's a true heartfelt thank you to each of you. PCEA acknowledges and appreciates the raises our staff has received over the past few years. We appreciate the hard work done by this board to make sure, year after year, our insurance premiums either hold steady or drop slightly. Those who watch they love the politics. No, this is not an easy task. This board has worked hard to make difficult decisions to find creative ways to fund raises, and it's appreciated. It's very brief.
Using your teacher voice, right?
That's just my across-the-board voice.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no worries. When looking to the future, we want to advocate for what is best for our students. We know that having highly qualified and experienced teachers is one of the most important factors in a child's success. Continuing the work to ensure our pay and benefits are competitive, if not better than the neighboring counties, will help us retain and attract the best educational staff. Besides teachers, this also includes our paras, our bus drivers, support staff, administrators, and anyone else I may have forgotten. Knowing this board, I feel confident that this is already a priority for each of you. I also want to share something that has been mentioned to me time and time again by multiple teachers and administrators in the county this year. Last year, we added a rotating substitute to each school. This position has helped keep schools open even with staff sickness was high. This position is proving to be very much needed, and even with it, we still have classes every day without substitutes. Our students are more attentive and less likely to misbehave when they are being supervised by an adult they already know within their school. I would like you to seriously consider adding an additional rotating substitute to each school. In closing, I want to again say thank you to each of you. The efforts by this board to ensure our raises, hold our benefits steady, and most recently, finding the funding for our bonus is noticed and appreciated. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, and Dr. Sears. My name is Meredith Araki. I teach elementary music at Riverlawn, at Dublin, and at Snowville Elementary. I'm here tonight to propose expanding the music program from an every other nine-week to a year-round program. Currently, with Bland County, Carroll County, Giles, Montgomery, Radford, Roanoke, and With Counties all polled, every one of those counties and others that expand from there provide 36 weeks full year-round. We are the only one that I know of that does a half-year program. And looking at the split between library, music, art, and PE, there is an average of 60% of specials' time going to PE, 20% to library, and just 10% to music and art. So why does this matter? Music is a powerful tool in learning. Knowledge and skills that students acquire through fine arts instruction include the abilities to think critically, solve problems resourcefully, communicate effectively, work collaboratively, understand historical and cultural perspectives, and exercise creative thinking by employing originality, flexibility, and imagination. Music instruction not only teaches pitch and rhythm to students, classroom music instruction incorporates and reinforces core classroom standards in literacy, math, science, social studies, and beyond. I think we've heard this before, but here are some specifics in what happens in our elementary music classrooms. In literacy, we look at phonemic awareness and rhyming. We do work with syllables, segmentation of words. We explore reading fluency and expression, and comprehension and recall. For math, we focus on early number sense, one-to-one correspondence, patterns, comparisons, spatial awareness, addition and subtraction, algebra concepts. Science and technology, we got sound production, digital music composition, science connections through songs. In social studies, we use songs from varying time periods, multicultural music selections, geographic awareness of song origins, and cultural celebrations through song. Direct instruction in music is detailed with Virginia State Standards, and the State Standard minimum requirements in the fine arts sets reasonable targets and expectations for what students need to know and be able to do in a sequential course of study. However, currently with 18 weeks, we don't have enough time to meet the minimum State Standards. And I know I'm probably getting close on my time, but we have community outreach just this past week at Snowville and at Riverlawn Elementary. At Snowville, we pulled in about 500 spectators or audience members, and at Riverlawn, almost 800. So looking at a way to bring the community into our schools, music is an incredibly powerful way to do that. Having a dedicated music teacher at most or all schools will allow us to be able to bring these programs more frequently, bringing the community in. I have these papers for you that I can bring to you for you to take a look at, and I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Would anyone else like to address the board concerning the budget for 2023-2024? Well, then, I am going to call recess until 6:00. If that's amenable to everyone. I don't want to start before 6:00 because I'm sure that we still have some people who are coming. Is that all right? Okay. Okay, we are in recess until 6:00. Thank you.
And that's what I told him, I said, "She is handing it to you."
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call us back from recess. Thanks to everyone for being so patient. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Pulaski County School Board. It's good to see you all here. I understand we have some recog-- oh, we have pledge of allegiance first. Let's do that first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Tori Vest and Sidney Polly. I ask that they come forward at this time to the podium. Tori is the daughter of Chrissy Vest. She serves as the SCA president and was chosen as one of the most valuable Cougar nominees. Sidney is the daughter of Bobby and Shelby Polly. She serves as the senior class president and was chosen as one of the most valuable Cougar nominees. If everyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some recognitions tonight. Should we head down front for those? Dr. Sears?
Yes, Madam Chair. Our first recognition of the evening is for the pack of the bus drivers and volunteers. Pulaski County Public Schools would like to offer a special thanks to the Pulaski County Public Schools Transportation Department, paraprofessionals, and office staff members for their help with Stuff the Bus. This is an annual event held to help support local families during the Thanksgiving season. With the help of our schools and local businesses, we were able to help 200 families have a traditional Thanksgiving meal. At this time, I would ask that the following employees come forward to be recognized. Director of Transportation Troy Barclay. Organizers for the event Gracie Nipper and Tina O'Dell. Assistance Vicki Jarrell, Jenny Anderson, Millie McPeak, Andy Haga, Brenda Helvey, Judy Edwards, Mark Cerber, David Brown, Andy Thornton, Karen Davis, Lisa Barker, Danielle Shook, Cheryl Jarrells, Tammy Reader, Whitney Sowell, John Earls, Muncie Swaker, Dorothy Krieger, and Mary Nestor. Thank you all. And we've got a gift for each one of them there in the box. Our next recognition is Employee of the Month. Pulaski County Public Schools and Pulaski County High School are pleased to honor Greg Kemp as the Employee of the Month. Mr. Kemp leads our custodial staff and takes great pride in our school. He is always friendly and positive. Even his radio traffic between his colleagues is encouraging and uplifting. Mr. Kemp is a key part of the village that helps us educate our students. He encourages students to be accountable and prideful of their school. PCHS is very fortunate to have Mr. Kemp as part of our family. Please join me in recognizing our Employee of the Month, Greg Kemp. Pulaski County Public Schools and Pulaski County High School are pleased to honor Lindsay Bars as Teacher of the Month. Ms. Bars is a special education teacher at PCHS. She was recently named Sheila Toyota and Growing the Future Partnerships Teacher of the Month. She volunteered with the PCH Go! Project where faculty, staff, and students worked to beautify PCHS. She has often found volunteering for bus duty both day and evening. She was also recently nominated by staff for a superlative as being the top of the nice list. Ms. Bars was an integral part of the team to cover checkouts and general safety during her recent shelter in place. She is always smiling and ready to help any student. She treats all students and colleagues with respect and is very sincere in her actions. She goes above and beyond to make sure that her students are on target to complete their assignments on time and inspires them to give it their all. Please join me in recognizing our Teacher of the Month, Lindsay Bars. Our final recognition of the evening is our Student of the Month. Pulaski County Public Schools and Pulaski County High School are pleased to recognize Dante Holmes as Senior of the Month. Dante is the son of Erica Holmes of Pulaski. His nominating teacher said Dante is one of the politest, most industrious students I've ever taught. He is actively involved in the Theater Arts Department while maintaining excellent grades throughout long hours of rehearsals and performances. He has a great personality and is an awesome friend to all of the theater students. He always goes above and beyond whatever is required of him. Dante's attitude is noticed campus-wide. His quiet demeanor and pleasant attitude are noticed by everyone. He is a joy to be around. In his free time, Dante enjoys hanging out with friends and relaxing. Upon graduation, he will be attending college to major in business. Please join me in recognizing our Senior of the Month, Dante Holmes.
Okay, now we have come to the portion of our meeting where we recognize citizens and their concerns. The first public comment session will be for persons who wish to address the board regarding items that are on the agenda. Items presented by citizens may be referred to the superintendent for research who may report back to the school board at a subsequent meeting or through other communication. If you wish to comment about individual employees or their performance, please present your comments first to the superintendent. Such matters will not be discussed during an open board meeting. Please limit all comments to three minutes. Public comment period will be limited to 30. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? Okay, there being none, we will have a public comment period at the end of the meeting as well. So now we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes from the regular meeting of November 9th, 2022. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Madam Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you, everybody. Now we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. We've all had an opportunity to review the agenda for tonight. Are there any changes, additions, corrections to the agenda? There being none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
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 Now we will move on to the consent agenda. We've had an opportunity to review the document concerning the payment of bills and the personnel agenda. Is there any discussion concerning the consent agenda tonight? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda that has been presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Yes.
I guess, yes.
I suppose I have to, yes.
Maybe.
For anyone who doesn't understand why we are hesitant, we have two very-- we have some longstanding and very cherished employees who are retiring at the end of the year and we have-- we will miss them greatly and have grudgingly accepted their desire to retire. I'm gonna warn you, though, people who retire usually end up with a second career, so if you wanna change your mind--
You're always welcome.
Always welcome back.
We have substitute physicians available, always.
And Ms. Sadler, if we have any old equipment that dies in one of the lunch-- lunchrooms, can you come back and--
Can fix it.
Do your placating of it to get it to run just until we can repair it? Thank you. You are the hobart whisperer, I think. Okay, we'll move on to our instructional focus. Dr. Sears?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The instructional focus for this month is Pulaski County High School. So at this time, I would ask Principal Ms. Jennifer Bowlin to come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, all members of the board. I assume that in front of you, you have a copy of our picture show, if you will. We figure the pictures that we have to share with you will share a bit more than the words I can. So, Dr. Sears, if you'll go ahead to the first one. Just in honor of Dee Lindsay tonight, we would like to dedicate this recognition of Pulaski County High School and our instructional focus to Ms. Dee Lindsay. As you guys know, the past couple of months have been different without her, but her memory definitely lives on at Pulaski County High School. So, we would just like to dedicate this to her.
Go ahead, Dr. Sears.
All right, so the first slide you have there, we're just gonna go through the past few months of the school year. It's just a welcome back to PCHS. The past couple of school years were unique. We all felt different feelings about the past couple of years, returning, hopefully seeking normalcy. What was normalcy going to look like? So, we, this summer in Richmond, met a man named Dr. John B. Gordon III. Great personality. After we heard him speak, we all kinda stepped back and said, "I feel a little bit better about this school year." I wanted that jump to get ready, to prepare for the next school year. Somebody to remind me why I was sitting in that chair that day. And so, we invited him to come to Pulaski County High School. He did. He presented. And I think we got rave reviews from his encouragement, his excitement, his energy, and reminding us exactly why we were sitting there, why we chose to be there. And we had a great lunch. It was a very energetic day. We had everybody at Pulaski County High School participating. I don't know if Mr. Kemp has left, but all of our custodial staff, all of our pairs, anyone who could be was there. So, we started the year off on a positive note, we felt.
Go ahead, Dr. Sears.
Then we got to start the school year. We got to move through all of the open houses. And we got to hit a point of commit to graduate along with our friends in CTE with a career focus. And we got to recognize-- focus, and we got to recognize our most valuable Cougars. So if you look at those pictures, you'll recognize several of our greatest seniors that we have this school year who were nominated by their peers, and in the spring, those students will be voted on by the staff and faculty to identify who our most valuable Cougar for the class of 2023 is. Go ahead. So this year, for 2022, we had what we seem to think was the longest homecoming week ever. It was in excess of a week, but we did start it off with a community event. We had PCHS Go. I'm pretty sure you guys are familiar with Pulaski County Go, where folks sign up to do things around the community. This was a version of that as created by our SCA and our Cougar Crazies leader, Ms. Kristin Hayes, where we allowed community members to donate funds and supplies to Pulaski County High School to beautify our school on a Saturday. We had lots of folks and their families there at the high school. We worked on lots of projects, lots of painting. The walls are not as white as they used to be. We have a little gold color here and there, but it was a really great event. In fact, you can see on the far right, that's our Teacher of the Month, Ms. Lindsay Bars, who was a great participant in that. Go ahead. And that led into Homecoming 2022. We just chose a few pictures there, so everybody in the audience could see them. I know it's difficult to see, but on the left, that is most valuable Cougar nominees with the famous Cougar mascot. And then you have our track team. Don't know if you've heard of them, they're pretty big. And then the third picture is one of our most famous, most participated days in Homecoming Spirit Week, and that is Anything But a Backpack Day. Follow us on Facebook if you don't already. It is very entertaining, and the kids are creative. And then the last picture, again, if you didn't hear, we brought out all of Pulaski County. I think the only person there, or not there, was my own mother. She was at a soccer game that night, but I think we brought Pulaski County out for the Homecoming Parade that month. So noted here, it doesn't seem like a lot, but if I were to look back at some of my colleagues, I feel like most mornings when you wake up as a staff member or student member at Pulaski County High School, you think to yourself, "What am I supposed to wear today? Am I supposed to wear a particular color? Am I supposed to represent something?" But we have learned and noticed by other schools' participation that one of the things that we do at the high school with our Spirit Weeks, we have a heavy participation. It's very fun, it's a camaraderie that you're not going to get in another way to bring to everybody. It's faculty, staff, students participating. Again, if you want to see some entertaining pictures, join us on our social media. But we did commit to graduate, Red Ribbon Week, Homecoming Week Plus, because again, it was the longest homecoming week ever, and then we're currently in 12 days of holidays. And listed on this particular side is just some community events. I don't think we really realize the opportunities we've gotten to work with the community this year until you stop and you try to put something like this together and you try to highlight moments thus far in the school year. Our athletic events, we recently had a wrestling match that had the highest attendance, I think, of any wrestling event at Pulaski County High School. We're getting more people attending. I think once we stepped out of some of the restrictions that we lived in the past couple of years, there's definitely a difference. Our PCHS Go allowed people to give to our school, allowed us to show them the products of what they donated to us. Our Veterans Day Concert, Dr. Sears was there that night. That's a great event that we have, and we have a lot of community participate in that. We also have collected over $3,000 to provide gifts and items needed over holiday break. We have a friend of Pulaski County High School who has collected $3,000, and we've been able to provide some things for some students. The parents are picking those up this week. And then local parade participation, not something that I considered when we were doing this originally, but to see our kids, Pulaski County High School, represented with our marching band, et cetera, in the local parades is very exciting. I believe they'll be in there Saturday at 11 o'clock in Dublin. Go ahead. And this one is not something that necessarily we look forward to strengthening our skills in, but we have definitely been able to look back at our ability to strengthen our emergency crisis plans. So we have a shelter-in-place crisis plan. You guys are aware of that. We provide that to you every year. This year, we got to detail it when we were in shelter-in-place once, and then when we had the water line break, and we managed to, with the help of Ms. Sheila Stoddard and her staff, we fed 1,250 people in, I don't want to guess the amount of time, but it was a very short amount of time delivery with very little notice, where everything had to be taken to the students. The email communication, we learned that once we send an email out, we make an announcement. We were able to see so many folks come to our office, what can we do to help? And that was with our checkout process and our dismissal supervision on those days. The number of people, you would have been surprised to see everyone coming out, and we created processes as we went, and those are things that I think ultimately will help in our emergency crisis planning. And finally, here we are, SOL testing. Oftentimes, when people picture SOL testing in a high school, in middle school, in elementary school, it's very simple to picture that every student gets distributed a test, they take the test, they step away, and that's the end. But if you will look at this list of items, it's far more inclusive. We have students who may not have passed an SOL test previously when they were enrolled. We remediate those students the next semester, and then those students, both term grads, they're going to graduate that year and have to have that pass score, and students retaking for a verified credit, they then test. Then we next go into making sure we're reviewing, and then students who are currently enrolled and end of course tested courses, those students test, and it's still not over. So once Thursday and Friday ended, students passed, students, if they needed an expedited retake opportunity, then we go into remediation, and then those students are tested for the second time. They get the chance to take it while they're still enrolled in the course. So just some things, we did have our history in science, and we're sitting at kind of closed scores, waiting for those expedited retakes to be added. And then our math and English reading scores, of course, writing was taken in the past, those scores were even higher, and those were very similar. We tested two on one day, two on another day. So hopefully, we'll be providing great SOL scores soon. And then this is just something that we felt like, this year, we had put out a call to teachers. We saw a great T-shirt that said, "Virginia is for Learners," and we thought, "What is PCHS for?" So we just added some words. Yeah, these are what some of our folks shared with us. We just added that. We felt that was important. And then the next slide, I feel like I might regret immediately, but Ms. Nikki Lockhart made these little precious elves of us, and that is myself, Ms. Dillon, Mr. Ward, and Ms. Blevins, represented well with elves. So with that said, if you have any questions, I can gladly answer those. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Sears, do you want to lead us through the information items?
Yes, Madam Chair. First information item is our student representative, and I'd ask that Evan come forward now. Our student representative this year is Evan Alger. A few of us were able to have a dinner with Evan and his family in Williamsburg at the VSBA Conference where he was a participant as the student representative a few weeks ago. Evan?
So first and foremost, I'd like to say thank you to you all for having me tonight. I want to take the opportunity to talk about that VSBA meeting itself. I was able to sit in a room with 30 or so of the brightest and most outgoing students in the state of Virginia, who, along with me, were representing their schools. We had speakers who spoke to us throughout the day. I believe there were four of them. We had the first speaker who spoke on the importance of having a love for all and an ego that doesn't get in the way of that. Our next speaker has worked on the administrations of multiple presidents and lots of those who have ranked very highly in the nation. She taught that as long as you have a mind and a will to go to where you want to get to, there's nothing that's going to stop you getting there. The next was a gentleman who helps represent the school boards on courts throughout the nation. He taught us the importance of, sorry, I'm a little nervous.
You're doing great.
Taught us the importance of running for public office and being able to put your opinions out there in the correct way. So the things that I took away from this meeting that have really stuck with me, the first being, I've kept a journal since then. Our first speaker, the one who talked about love, having a love for all and the ego that doesn't get in the way of that, he taught us that not only do we not have a love for others, but a love for ourselves. Many times, people have so much love for others that they fail to recognize problems that they have with their problem lives, and I really took that to heart in the fact that I'm keeping a journal in order to remember the small memories that many people forget. So as the representative for the school, I've tried to talk to many teachers and many students about different things they see wrong or right within the school system. Although many students have grievances about having to go to school more than one day a week, as we did during COVID, they don't have any large problems that they see with the school. Likewise with the teachers, I've talked to teachers from each of the different subjects. All of them say that currently it's running smoothly. They're very happy with different activities that the administration has planned after school to get teachers up and moving and get morale up. So I'm happy to report that everything is running smoothly at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alger.
Do you all have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. golden?
Evan has been a student advisor on the advisory team since he was a freshman, and he's had a few successes. Would you like to...
Oh, yes.
...share your successes in advocacy?
My first problem that I found at a high school was that we did not always have hand soap in the bathrooms. I am very thankful to announce that since then, we have had hand soap in the bathrooms, as well as I and some of my other peers found that the toilet paper was subpar. I am very glad to announce that we now have toilet paper that is to everyone's standards. Yeah, so the two things that I campaigned for for multiple years have now been fulfilled, and I'm very happy.
Those are important things.
Yes.
And it only took him three years to get us there.
That's pretty typical in government. That's okay, you did faster than most of us do.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Evan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Evan.
The next information item is the American Rescue Act, SR3 Local Plan Review. Mr. Stafford will be doing that.
Thank you, Dr. Sears, Madam Chairman, and members of the school board. First of all, I want to mention that I apologize, you did not have a budget analysis on the agenda for tonight, but when I was out last week with my illness, I was delayed, and so I'll be working on that and getting that to you over the next several days. So I'll send that to you by email. Tonight, this is the American Rescue Plan or ARP Act, SR3 Local Plan Review. This is a requirement in the federal guidelines of the American Rescue Plan Act to, every six months, to do a review of our local plan and to offer to the public any opportunity, which we will tonight through both public comment sessions, the opportunity to weigh in on our plan. I do want to mention, this is a federal guideline, and that's why we've been doing it every six months, and I'm going to be very brief tonight. There is a state mandate or guideline that has now come out by executive order by the governor in October that's going to require us, and we'll be doing it at our school board meeting in January, to do another, basically a similar type of thing, to discuss our plan, offer the opportunity for the public and other stakeholders to weigh in and to really give a more expansive look at our SR3 plan. So apologize for the redundancy, but again, this is a federal requirement, and then next month, we'll be doing the state-required response. Just an overview of that budget that I included here, the learning loss recovery, which totaled about $1.6 million, or about 20% of our application, has not changed that balance, even though you're seeing, what you're seeing now is the full budget that was submitted when we originally applied for our funds. Right now, that balance is about $900,000, so we are using that on an ongoing basis, both through our summer program, but then also our before-school, after-school, Saturday school STEM programs, or other learning loss recovery programs that are ongoing. And we'll probably have this here next month to kind of talk about that in more detail. Just also want to mention, of course, the other large portion of this is in the, I don't know what page that is, but the capital project shown, that has been changed since our last public comment, because we now have pretty solid, well, definitely solid numbers on all the capital projects, and so those have all been awarded. So, you know, we have currently the $898,000 for the HVAC upgrades to the CTE Center. Those are substantially complete. We're now waiting on some other work to be done before we pay that out, but that project is largely complete. This summer, we're going to have, out of this total, out of the $6.1 million shown here, $5 billion worth of projects that are going to be commencing this summer. The biggie will be the roof replacement projects going on at three schools. That's about $3 million. And then we also have the $1.62 million door replacement project at Pulaski County High School. That will pretty much make that a big construction zone for the entire summer. So again, this is kind of an overview for you and for the public, and then again, we'll be having a more in-depth look next month.
At our January meeting, we will need to have another public hearing to open it up for input on the plan. The governor's office and the State Department of Education are concerned about the learning loss gaps, and they have sent out a list of recommendations for things that we've considered before, but they are recommending that school divisions consider going to a year-round school model, some of the stuff that we are doing before and after-school tutoring, Saturday school. We have worked in a lot of those, but they are now supporting schools, you know, taking a look outside of the box to figure out solutions to help close those learning gaps. So we'll have a more in-depth conversation about that and some of those recommendations at the January meeting.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a discussion of policy IAR. At our meeting last month, the board passed the instructional materials policy IIA, and part of that policy directed me to come up with a set of procedures as to how we would identify sexually explicit material. And so that is what the IAR outlines, those procedures, and this is just an informational item this evening. If the board wants changes, we can make that before you vote on it next month. Basically, what the procedures are, and we already have a lot of pieces in place under policy KLBE on how parents can challenge different materials, and it can be challenged for any number of reasons, but this establishes the procedure if they want to challenge material because they believe that it is sexually explicit. But the procedures that I'm recommending are that any student, teacher, parent, or guardian may request that a learning resource be evaluated for sexually explicit content as identified in policy, board policy IIA. If you remember, our policy refers back to state code and those definitions. And if they want to make that request, it should be initiated using the form that is available under policy KLB-E. If that is initiated by the, and it would need to be a teacher in a school, a student in that school, or the parent of a student in that school to initiate this. It can't be open to just anyone who gets a list off of... It can't be open to just anyone who gets a list off of social media and wants to challenge all these materials. It needs to be somebody who has a vested interest in that school and helping us make sure that we are following the policies that we set for that school or for our school division. But the committee will, the principal will convene a special review committee as defined in policy KLBR, and that committee would consist of a principal, a librarian, a teacher, a parent, not the parent who was challenging the material, but another parent, and possibly a student, depending on the material and the suitability of including a student in that process. They would evaluate the material using the instrument that is developed here, and this instrument is taken entirely from state code. It uses the definitions that are outlined in state code. So, they would first look at Section 1, and if the material has a yes checked for any of the Section 1 items, then they would go to the second set of criteria. And if it, if a yes would be checked in any of the Section 2 criteria, then that material would be considered sexually explicit. If it is just checked in Section 1 and didn't meet any of the criteria in Section 2, then we could still make that determination, but it wouldn't be definite. There would be some leeway there for the committee to work with. If materials that are found to be sexually explicit, or if materials are found to be sexually explicit, they would be removed from circulation for all elementary and middle school classes without exception and the library. And they would be, they could be removed from circulation from the high school or placed into a restricted section of the library where they will only be made available to students over the age of 17 or over unless their parents give permission for them to check out said materials from the library. And they would not be used for full class assignments under any circumstances at any Are there any que, and this process was developed with input from the librarians. It has been reviewed with the faculty and staff advisory team, the student advisory team, and the parent advisory team, and it has been tweaked a little along the way based on feedback from those groups, but the bulk of the feedback came from the librarians. Okay, and if you do have questions or concerns and want to discuss it, like say, it'll be on the agenda next month, so we have a month to tweak it even further if board members feel like additional changes need to be made. Or if we want to do more discussion, we can put it off another month and vote on it in February if needed. Okay, the next, as we were meeting with librarians, we had them review all of the policies that pertain to library materials, and so a lot of these are just updating the policies with changes that have occurred. For example, policy IIBD-R, we're taking away the sending, taking out the part of sending books to a commercial bindery because we don't do that any longer. And questionable book titles, we're having, asking that Pulaski County Public Schools' librarians keep a standard list of those titles and check the, you know, if there are any that are questionable, that they not be put on that list, or that they at least be evaluated. I believe that was the only changes for that. Policy JFC-R8, that is the drug testing of student athletes. The board directed me at the last meeting to come up with a recommendation on the policy because we were aware that there were inconsistencies with how it was applied versus students who were violating the code during the school day, you know, student athletes who might violate the drug, alcohol, tobacco use policy during the day. We're having less of a consequence than students who were testing positive, who may have been exposed to secondhand vaping, which we found out is very easy to show up in our, or can show up in our test easily. We have reviewed the current policy with the various advisory teams, and we also formed a steering committee to take a look at our policy, and we had our first meeting this morning. The goals of that meeting was to decide whether or not they wanted to recommend to the board about keeping the policy, and if they did want to keep it, does it need to be changed? And if it does need to be changed, what changes? The committee does want to keep the policy. They feel that having it as a deterrent is of value. The parents, Dr. Cash was on the parent advisory team meeting yesterday. They were unanimous in wanting to keep it because they felt like it gave them an extra, some backing in talking to their kids about these issues. So, they are recommending that we keep it, the committee is, and the committee was made, we had coach representatives, an athletic director, students, and a parent of an athlete all on this committee. One of the things they, or some of the changes they are recommending, that it be expanded to all co-curricular activities, including band, drama, choir, and clubs, and not just focused on the athletes, and the reasoning being is these students are representing Pulaski County High School, just like our athletes are, and they should be subject to the same type of scrutiny and the same rules as the athletes. They are recommending that we look at a first offense, handling it similar to how we handle the first offense if they're breaking the rule on campus, which is more of an educational component. And then if it gets into second and third offenses, then it becomes more punitive. And, let's see, they would like to, for us to take a look at vendors, because the current vendor, it takes one to two weeks to get the results back, and they wanted to know if there were vendors who could provide the testing results with a quicker turnaround so that coaches wouldn't be blindsided, you know, the day before a game regarding a test that had happened two weeks prior, which I think has happened recently, and communicate, this would be for a second or third or fourth offense, but if parents want to appeal that, then communicate options, because some parents don't know where to take their students to get the testing, that, you know, they have to provide a clean test for the student to be able to return to competitions. So, they asked that we have a list of providers that we could offer parents who could do that without having to do the research on their own. They recommend that we work more education into the parent meetings and student education prior to the season's beginning, so that students will know what these consequences are, and they'll also know the dangers of using some of the devices, especially vaping devices. And they asked that we look to see if we could come up with an accept, we know that from the letter that we received from the doctor this year, that secondhand vaping does show up on these types of tests, and so is there a level that where a doctor could say with some degree of certainty that it was probably from secondhand? And if that's the case, not penalize the student who might have a parent who vapes in the car while they're driving the student to and from school. So, what I would like to do is pull a few more people into the committee, our nursing supervisor, and maybe a couple more coaches and another parent or two, and try to work out some of these details. And our goal would be to present a revised policy to the board by the February meeting for consideration, if the board is okay with moving in that direction.
So, a first offense would be treated, according to the recommendation, a first offense would be treated for a student athlete, no different than it would be for a child, you know, who got caught in a bathroom up here-
Yes.
-as it should be. It's more consistent.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Board policy JN, I think, this is student fees, fines, and charges. And this, we, each school was handling the fee, fees differently, so we just came up with a standard fee waiver form. If a parent, if a student loses a library book, let's say, and we're going to charge them, but the parent can't afford it, then we have a standard form to use, rather than each school was kind of doing their own thing. So, that's the purpose of the change here, is just making it a standard form. Policy KLBR, this has to do with parents who want to challenge the material, and it's just adding in that it needs to be a parent or guardian of a Pulaski County Public School student, that we're not going to open those challenges up to just anyone. KLBR, I think, was the form. It's changing the makeup of the committee that would be reviewing challenge, challenging, when the material is challenged, it's changing the makeup of the committee by taking out the director of instruction, because we eliminated that position and consolidated it with another one a few years ago. And so, this is just changing the wording in that to match our current staffing configuration at the central office. And then, our summit of evaluation revision, I'd ask for Mr. Atwood come forward. He has been working with our faculty and staff advisory team on making some of the required changes in this document.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, and Dr. Sears. This information item on the summit of evaluation revision is based on a Virginia Department of Education requirement that we add a new standard to the standards that we evaluate, we use to evaluate our teachers. This standard is Standard 6 in the document that you have, and that's the part of the document that you would probably want to take a closer look at. It is titled Culturally Responsive Teaching and Equitable Practices. We have worked on this particular standard in adding it to our evaluation by talking with our faculty, staff, advisory group. We have had two meetings and made some revisions already. At the recommendation of Dr. Sears, we are looking at making Standard 6 a self-evaluation instrument for the next three years. This will allow all of our teachers to pass through at least one evaluation cycle and give them, give us time to do more training, give them time to do more training, and they will be evaluated on a self eval for three years, and then we would move to a full eval after that. And revisions would be possible during those three years if we find that there are concerns or issues moving forward. The DOE has also changed, in addition to adding Standard 6, they have changed the ratings that you see on all eight standards. The ratings were, in the past, labeled as distinguished, accomplished, proficient, and does not meet the standard. The Virginia Department of Education has changed those to highly effective, effective, approaching effective, or ineffective. So, those would change on all eight standards moving forward. One other change was that what was previously named a SMART goal is now just called a goal based on student data. So, teachers have to establish one goal based on their testing data or on something closely related to their actual teaching job within the school. Schools can also set a goal, but teachers, their evaluation would be based on just the goal that they set for themselves, based on looking at their data or gaps or deficiencies in their data. So, what we are looking at, as far as this is an information item, we would like to ask for approval in January of Standard 6, which is required by the DOE, we would also like to ask for approval of all eight standards to have a new rating system, which moves over to, again, from the distinguished and accomplished to the more, more looking at, using the word effective in those ratings. Any questions?
When you say teachers are going to develop a goal based on student data, are you talking about their own benchmark assessments that they do at the beginning of nine weeks versus the end of the nine weeks?
It could be that data. It could be that data. It could also be based on some SOL strand where there's, you know, they have considerable concern. Their goal would have to, you know, start with a baseline, whatever, wherever data they have at that point, and they would have to set a goal for improvement, and then, you know, they would be rated after the new data comes in as either highly effective, effective, approaching effective, and so on. But that is, that's actually a reduction from what we have now, where we have SMART goals that count 40% of their final evaluation, which had been a concern. This new goal would count the same as the other seven standards. It would not have a higher effect on their overall evaluation, which is something that I think across the state, many teachers thought 40% was a huge amount of their evaluation. They wanted it to move to this, in this direction, and that's what's happening, at least in the current, that's what's happening, so.
It seems much simpler this way.
Seems much simpler for all of them to count the same. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
We have a few calendar items. Friday will be a three-hour early release, and then we'll be on winter break from Monday, December 19th to Friday, December 30th, and we'll have Work Day and Professional Development on January 2nd and 3rd. Our first budget work session will be on Tuesday, January 25th, and the next one will be on Tuesday, February 7th, then Tuesday, March 7th, and Tuesday, March 14th. That will be our regular board meeting, and that is when we're hoping to have a budget request for the board to consider approving, forward to the county at that time.
Do we have, is the General Assembly a short session or a long session this time?
It's a short session this year.
Hopefully?
Yeah.
That's Mr. Stafford, because he's the one who's watching it every single day.
I haven't done it until June 30th.
Well, I couldn't remember if last year was a long or a short, because it did go long regardless of whether it set out to be a long or a short. Okay.
I might have to extend that retirement take.
And that takes us to our action item. First action item would be the Title III Part A application revision. Ms. Card?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Sears, members of the board. The 2022-2023 Title III application was submitted for your review. It includes family literacy programming through a partnership with the public library, as well as programming families may do at home. It also includes EL professional development and an EL summer enrichment camp. A portion of the elevation database that our division uses is also written into the budget of the 2223 Title III application. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the application.
I don't think we have any questions. Any discussion? Oh, I don't know why I'm reaching for that. Do I have a motion to approve the 2022-2023 Title III Part A application revision as presented?
On my cap motion.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Card.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Sears, would you like to explain that Virginia Voyager Family Educational FERPA consent to release educational records?
I would ask that Ms. Atkinson come forward-
Ms. Atkinson can come and do that.
-she is much better versed in this than am I.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. The Virginia Department of Education has released a platform for schools to track their high-quality work-based learning experiences. Because companies have various age requirements related to employment, some companies require an employee to be 16 before-
an employee to be 16 before they will hire them, some won't hire under the age of 18, the system is going to require that we upload student names and birthdays when we use the With that, the Department of Education has developed a FERPA consent form, and the draft FERPA form that you guys see is specific to Pulaski County based off of that suggested form. I've also shared a packet from Dr. Jan Huffman, who is our Region 7 Work-Based Learning Specialist, so that you can see the information that will be shared with local businesses because they would be uploading their information into that system as well to help us pair students better with work-based learning opportunities that relate to their potential career path. I'm seeking approval to use this system next semester with our students in the Youth Excel Program, which is a partnership with the Pulaski County Chamber of Commerce. Our 11th grade students apply and are placed in a job shadowing experience for a day. And we would also like to use this system with students completing an internship in the spring. We chose these two experiences to try the platform with because they count towards students' graduation requirements, and a formal means of documenting these experiences is something that has been needed for a while. If this semester is successful, we'd like to expand the system to more of our high-quality work-based learning experiences, like the school-based enterprises, which are the small businesses that our different programs run within the school. Also, with this version of the form, we would be required to get parental consent each year if we decide to continue using the system. So I'm requesting that we have permission to use the system and have parents sign the FERPA consent form if their students are participating in those experiences.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Atkinson or any discussion about the FERPA form?
I would just like to make a recommendation that a footnote be added to the form to give the date and version number of the form.
That's a great idea. There being no discussion or any further -- or any further questions, do I have a motion to approve the Virginia Voyager Platform Consent Form?
I'll make the motion. I don't know if she's going to do that.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cox. Thank you, Ms. Golden. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Ms. Cox? Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
At future agenda items, does anyone have any agenda items they would like to request Dr. Sears put on the agenda for future meetings or look into putting on the agenda for future Okay, well, if you think of anything between now and the next meeting, you know where to find it. We have reached the second recognition of citizens portion of our meeting. At this time, persons may present ideas or concerns regarding Pulaski County Public Schools. The School Board in this meeting will take no action. Items presented by citizens may be referred to superintendent for research, you may report back to the School Board at a subsequent meeting, or through other communication. If you wish to comment about individual employees or their performance, please present your comments first to the superintendent. Such matters will not be discussed in an open meeting. Please limit all comments to three minutes, and the whole period will be 30 minutes. So do we have -- see, Mr. Wood has got stopwatch ready to go. Do we have anyone who would like to address the Board at this time? Please approach the podium.
Board, Dr. Sears. I guess on the agenda, I'd like to discuss the under information items, number three, discussion of School Board Policy IIAR. That's the one that reads, "The Procedures for Identifying and Addressing Instruction Materials That Include Sexually Explicit Content." Just reading down through them real quickly as you was going through them. "Any student, teacher, or parent or guardian may request that a learned resource be evaluated for sexually explicit material." I can understand the teacher, their ability to identify something. The student, depending on the age that they are, wouldn't be able to identify something that would be sexually explicit, I don't think. And then in regards to the parent or guardian, what, according to the new policy, the department shall develop and make available to each School Board, ensuring parental notification of any instruction material that includes sexually explicit material. It seems like you're addressing -- you're addressing what to do once it's identified. But as far as a parent, myself, if I had a second grader or a third grader or any grade, how would I know what's in the schools, in the curriculum, or what's on the classroom, the bookshelf that's there? Can you help me with that?
I'd be happy to meet with you outside of this to discuss that if you'd like to set up something.
Yeah, I mean, there is a -- there is going to be like a resource that a parent can go to, and if they've been told of a book that has sexually explicit, they could go to the Pulaski County Curriculum or Library and look and see if that title's in the school?
Yes, the teachers should be communicating any reading list for classwork with the parents. You know, as far as providing a list of every book that's in the library, I don't know the feasibility of that.
Okay, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out where, you know, as a parent, where would you -- the identity part as a parent, how would you know that something's there? I understand what happens after that, the committee reviews, and there's a review process. I understand that, but it's the identifying part that, you know, if you come in and say these books have been identified by X group, that they are PG 10, PG 13. You know, if there's a rating system that goes like that, is there -- I guess we'll just meet later on and discuss that, because I think this will be reviewed to the parents as well, what they need to do.
Yeah, and we would probably need to discuss that with the principals as to how to communicate that, but it's something we'd certainly be open to.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the Board at this time? Then we'll get to the end of my agenda. We don't have anything else. We are adjourned, and I wish everyone a wonderful holiday.
Thank you.
Thanks.